Okay, if everyone would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. I need to make one change to the consent agenda. The minutes are not ready yet and they'll be ready for the next meeting, so we need to take letter A off the consent agenda items. Any other changes or corrections? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I'll go second with Amy. There's no other conversations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, agenda is approved. First thing, Mike, I assume you're taking this for Ken, the second reading of the ordinance?
If you recall at the last meeting, we provided you with an overview on the ordinance that... Give me one moment here. ...that authorizes the conveyance of new property owned by the city. That we had a quitclaim matter that was reviewed by the city attorney's office and through conversation with the property owner. And there was a couple of the property owners that were affected by these quiet title actions as well. They are recommending that we grant as part of the ordinance approval, the approval of a quitclaim deed to the property owner that filed the matter, which is Ms. Gill at the owner of the property of 107 Columbus Avenue North. So unless you want me to go through it in more detail, you approved the first reading at the May 7th meeting, and so your action 78 would be approval of the second reading or the final approval of the ordinance, which then grants us as part of this, after getting it published in the newspaper, then we would file and deliver a quiet title or a quitclaim deed to Ms. Gill at 107 Columbus Avenue.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or any other issues? Ken? Well, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the second reading ordinance.
So moved.
Seven.
I got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Dave Brusick. There's no other comments or questions? All in favor of approving the second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Or did Dad need to go roll call? Okay. Thank you, Mike. Next, we're here. We have Chris Cavit here, who is going to kind of give us a little update on the 2020 Main Street project along with his report. Thanks for coming, Chris.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Obviously, before you tonight is a consideration of the resolution to accept a report in order of a public hearing. I mean, you've all had some contact, one way or another, open houses, neighborhood meetings, you name it. So certainly have some familiarity with it. We did have a neighborhood meeting on April 26th. It was televised. It's available on the project website and the city. There's a link to the city's website. So if anybody's interested in details, we covered a lot of details there. I thought I'd kind of page through the report and just hit a few, some of the highlights and things to kind of consider or if you have a chance to look into it a little deeper. And let's see if I can maneuver this mouse here a little bit. Okay. Of course, I don't know what I'm doing here. Well, let's try that again.
Mitch, you know what he's doing?
I wanted to scroll with a rolling bar. That isn't going to quite do it for me here. We'll just flip this page through here. And I'll refer, I'll just refer more to, more than anything, to certain spots in the report. So obviously, there's an executive summary. I refer you to that. Quick synopsis of the project. Jumping right down to costs and the funding. Kind of outlined, like we've done in other reports, kind of outlines the different types of improvements, the total amount. Total amount of the project is project construction and all the project-related costs is just over 12 million. As you can see, MINDOT is the largest share here. About 54% of the cost of project is MINDOT. A little bit from La Sure and Scott County because they each have a leg on... La Sure County has the First Avenue Southeast leg. Scott County has the Columbus Avenue North leg. So they have a small contribution to the roundabouts that again are being proposed in here. This Fendel ATP District 7 grant, that is 1.77 million. The city applied for and received a grant they used in 2020 to help roadway eligible costs that MINDOT would not pay for. So example, landscaping, streetscaping, some of the parking costs and the sidewalk costs, some other things that'll help, a help of funding. It doesn't hurt all of it, but it definitely helps for a good share. You can see it's 15% of the cost of the project. Of course, sewer and water utilities, funding their share of the project, their shares of the project. As with all public improvements, we are proposing assessments on this. And again, they're outlined in here. I'll get on a few key things regarding the assessments. But you can see about 12% of the cost of the project. And then we're referring to City General Levy and/or state aid funds. We can utilize the city's state aid funds for what we call off-system improvements. So like county, county state highways or trunk highways that the portion of the MINDOT is not going to pay for, the portion that the grant is not going to cover can help fund a share of that too. There'll still be some levy. And we're, as we get closer to the project, getting to the point where it's ready for bidding and in the war, we'll have a better idea on how much state aid we might want to apply to this. Maybe none or a good share of it. Because we need to forecast, look at some of the forecasts for some of these future state aid projects coming up. And you may recall in the past, we borrowed ahead on state aid. And we have actually a positive fund now and it's starting to grow. But we can look at advancing some of those funds if we need to help keep, get the costs lower on the general levy.
Chris, just as an aside, before you go too much further for those that might be watching on TV later on, probably should do a quick overview of what the project entails, where it goes to, from, and then what's to be done with the entire project. You just covered the funding. So let's talk about what does the project entail.
Yeah. So let's go, we're going to jump right down to exhibits. Oh, not that one. Too much to see there. So for those that aren't familiar with the project or have viewed it at home, the extent of the project, the reconstruction portion of the project is from Trump Highway 21 on the west side to Seventh Street Southeast on the east side. Just shy of the strip mall there on the east side. I'm sorry, Seventh Avenue, yeah, thank you. Seventh Avenue Southeast on the east side. There is a small little portion of, we'll call it surface rehab, that's going to be included in the project. It's not part of the public improvement process. It's really mostly missed. So you just need to get the roadway into a decent condition on that first block or two blocks west of Trump Highway 21. As you remember, it's in pretty rough shape. And so obviously, it needs to be improved enough so it extends its life before MINDOT starts looking at what might happen on that west side, which again is a ways out. So the extent of the project, and again, there's not a lot of illustrations to show what's in the work in detail. And again, we can, if there's questions, we can get specific items. But we are looking at full sanitary sewer replacement through the entire project. An exception might be a short segment under the railroad, which we were looking at actually doing trenchless lining of the sanitary sewer. It's structurally in good shape. And if we can do that, it's grade-wise, elevation-wise, everything's fine. We don't have to look at doing a... You basically have to do a jacking under the railroad. You push a casing under the railroad and then you put a new pipe in. And it's pretty extensive. And if we can avoid having to do that, it's a big perk and a good cost savings. So whole sanitary sewer replacer along the entire corridor.
Chris, in the estimate, is the full work under the railroad included in the estimate? Or is it not included in the estimate?
The lining is included in the estimate. The cross, there'll be a crossings for railroad, or for water main and for storm work. So those have been included in the cost estimate as well as the lining.
Okay.
No, we haven't, yeah, we haven't assumed a complete replacement of that sanitary stretch, basically for right-of-way to right-of-way on the railroad. We've assumed that would be line. And that's not already been really an option for the rest of the system. It's in too rough shape. Advantage there, we have services going into the sanitary sewer. It's in good shape, the elevations that work. So it's kind of an ideal situation. Plus, we don't have to do a jacking under the railroad. Again, full water main replacement along the entire corridor. The biggest challenge for, in relation to the water, and we shared this at the neighborhood meeting is, especially in the downtown here, where the buildings are basically upright, uptight against the right-of-way. The water services that go from the main road to the buildings, we're going to have to actually bring those into the buildings. So we're going to have to, we're going to work up a plan, working with the contractor, bringing either a plumber on or with the contract or as a subcontract so that those service pipes can be brought into the buildings and reconnected to the plumbing on the inside. We can't do connections outside the building because it's basically under the sidewalk right up next to the buildings. And it's an issue that we wouldn't want to have to deal with in the future if that connection failed. So it will be to everybody's advantage to bringing those into the building. It just adds a lot more, a little more complication to the process. It'll add some more cost to the process. But it'll be a cost that will have to be assessed to those properties as well. So that's some details that we're still flushing out. Sanitary sewer is a little easier. We don't have to, we can make those connections at the building and then they have a lot of options to deal with the plumbing in the future. There was a lot of debate about sidewalk widths as we went through this entire project, working with MINDOT, working with city staff. There was some difference of opinion on what that width should be, what's kind of common standards today. Just to give a frame of reference, the roadway in the downtown corridor is 50 feet wide. After a bunch of back and forth, and we ultimately compromised to DOT and city on a 44-foot wide road. So 50 to 44. Frame of reference, the eastern part of the project, as it exists today, down by the funeral home, is 44 feet. If you can imagine full parking in the downtown here when the road is finished, it'll be similar to when you have a funeral down by the funeral home. It'll feel a little tighter. It'll make traffic go slower, but it'll, it'll be a little bit of a difference from what it is now. Again, 50 feet is really, is actually too wide for the way, you know, they look at designing roadway, setting lane widths and parking widths and stuff. But it's, you can see, it'll be a bit of a difference. That three extra feet will be gained on either side. Oh, six feet, three feet on either side will be gained on the sidewalk. So the sidewalk in the pedestrian zone will actually be wider, three feet wider than it is today. So that's a little bit of a compromise for pedestrians and stuff. So yeah, we're just showing here again what existing width is as it is today. And basically, those lanes will be narrowed to 12 and 10. 12-foot drive-through lanes and 10-foot parking lanes. And I did have an exhibit here. Again, showing 50 was the existing, 44 is the proposed. And we did a, Glenn and I did a little exercise as part of the debating process of what the width should be, just to kind of get a feel for what does that look like to the person that's parking a car. The lanes that were marked out there, if you recall, the white line here was marked last year to give people a feeling for potentially an 11-foot drive lane. So this is actually 11 feet from center line to white line. And then 10-foot parking is what it would look like here. The final product will actually be a 12-foot drive lane, so a foot wider, but the parking will be the same. Basically, it'll look like, would look like this width here. So again, that was shared with the neighborhood. For what it's worth, MINDOT actually wanted to go a little narrow on the parking lane. And again, we had a lot of concerns about snow storage, wind row, clearing snow. Public works had a lot of concerns. That's why they felt that we're looking at actually something a little bit wider in the, and that was the compromise, was that 40-foot, 44-foot wide road. We will be looking at, and I don't really have an illustration for that, but we will be looking at some, just giving examples here. In the drawings, these are the drawings and in the report. There's about 10 sheets related to the Main Street, so I'm not going to page through all of them. But MINDOT is looking at trying to minimize or close as many driveways as reasonable as possible. Meaning accesses, for example, if somebody has multiple accesses around a corner, trying to eliminate some of those access points on Main Street. Either some that aren't used at all, period, or where they have redundant access on a side street. The ideal being that minimizes conflict points and also, basically, provides more parking on Main Street. So maybe one parking space taken off, taken out by a driveway opening that in essence is really not needed. There's a process right now where we're meeting with the property. I'm sorry, the project manager, SEH, Nikki Farrington and Glenn have set up these with these property owners to bring it to their attention. And ultimately, if it's, it'll land in MINDOT's lap to look at any final closures. There's only a small handful that still haven't been resolved. They're still in discussion. As an example, Wells Fargo Bank, they met last week or the week before, looked at moving this access off of Main Street over to Second Avenue Northwest. Again, eliminate that conflict point and provide again one initial parking space on Main Street. So those are just some examples. So we do have, we have some noted, closed or closed with a question mark if they were at least drive entrances that were being discussed. Again, they'll all have to be finalized with, between MINDOT and the property owners. We're just the facilitator at this point. The project, of course, will include lighting. There's really not a lot of... There's an exhibit here, just to give you a frame of reference or an idea of what the, kind of a concept that we're looking at. There was a lot of discussion on lighting. And a lot of it had to do with the... The study by MINDOT was to study historic structures and decide whether there was enough historic structure, enough density to qualify the area as a historic district. And the lights that are out there are similar to others that have been shown in past old photos of globe fixtures and whether that warranted perpetuating that type of fixture or not. As it turned out, the State Historical Society, or SHIP, or State Historical Organization or whatever, some, that basically reviews this, determined that the density of historic buildings wasn't enough to qualify it as a historic district, which gave us a little bit more wiggle room when it came to what we could do. After a long, you know, some considerable debate, it was decided really the globe structures are not efficient. They're not efficient for lighting. They're very, a lot of light pollution, a lot of light glare. And there's better fixtures from an efficiency standpoint and better fixtures from, really, you know, there can still be stuff that looks historic, fits downtown, fits the historic district. And so we're looking, from a concept, we're looking at something like this where probably overhead lights that light the roadway, lower lights that light the pedestrian way. They would, not every fixture would be high and low. There'd be some that might just be low lights that light the pedestrian way. And the higher fixtures might be spaced more at intersections and things like that. So at this point, it's still a concept and a detailed design hasn't been done. But it, some type of fixture, this concept of this fixture will be looked at at this point. I'm sure if there's any question, Bruce Felton said more on lighting.
What about the bump outs?
Bump outs, yes, thanks. Bump outs will be perpetuated because, and that obviously was an item of discussion. And yes, we hear a lot of comments. I'm sure you've had too as well about people questioning the use of the bump outs. Nice example here. The key is the bump outs help shorten that distance for the pedestrian. In essence, it also makes the road feel a little narrower, so it does tend to slow traffic. And the big key for, again, for the pedestrians is the pedestrian now is out at the edge of the, still on the curb, but they're out at the edge of the parking lane. So they're more visible for the cars coming through because they're out, out away from the parked cars. So where it makes sense, they are being perpetuated, continued. And in most cases, they're where they're at today. I think there's only one or two spots where we added them now, proposed to add them now over in the east end that don't exist today. Down by the park, where again, there's a crossing down there that's... So this is, yeah, down by the library there and then down by Pershing. So this is kind of a difficult crossing for pedestrians down by the park and in Pershing. So we are looking at the bump outs, a marked crosswalk. Even looking at doing a type of flasher system so if you can hit a button, the flashes will go and shows the pedestrian wants to cross. Another key item worth mentioning that was again brought up at the neighborhood meeting, we will be obtaining temporary easements from everybody along the corridor. Part of that has to do with really MINDOT and the type of funding on this project, the fact that we're dealing with a lot of buildings that are close to right-of-way. Actually, the temporary easements will go 10 feet within the buildings and that really is really... To allow us to, in case of the need to work on the front stoop or to get into the building to do a water service connection, things like that. So all those property owners will be contacted about obtaining right-of-entry or construction easement, is what it is. Any questions on, kind of, that's a quick synopsis on the scope of work. Anything that I forget?
Roundabouts and mini, the roundabouts.
Oh, yeah, I guess I had a... I must have missed that line. So yes, there was an intersection control evaluation study done for both the First Avenue Southeast intersection as well as the Columbus Avenue intersection. Looking at existing traffic, traffic volumes, as well as what is anticipated traffic volumes in the future. Obviously, we're not designing the road for 2020. We're designing the road for 2040 and growth and et cetera. So obviously, the First Avenue South, these intersections signalized. So we looked at the options of, you know, do you continue the signals? Do you look at something different? How is a four-way stop work, two-way stops? And out of that recommendation basically came to consider the mini roundabouts, as they're called. They do fit within the existing right-of-ways. There is a video online. And it's photos online on the project website that do show you images of the St. James Mini Roundabouts that were, construction was finished last year, showing again all types of vehicles going through that intersection. The one advantage we have here, again, it will handle all vehicles. The Center Island is basically traversable. It's, there's a little bit of a rise over it, but it's basically traversable. So like a semi that comes in can pass right over that median and the medians even and the Center Island. I like to tell a story of St. James. The difference between these and the St. James Mini Roundabouts or that route through St. James is the main route actually goes in in St. James, takes, has to turn, go up a block, and then turns again. Where here, most of the truck traffic, 99% of it's going to go straight on through. And again, that's a maneuver will be, and not an issue for long vehicles. Even so, they can still make a 90-degree left turn as they need to, or right turn. No right-of-way, I should say, essentially no right-of-way was needed for this entire project. One exception that we are showing is a small little sliver from St. Wenceslas Church that would need to be acquired on that northwest corner. Basically, to provide enough width on the roundabout and make the geometry work. So it's pretty minor. And actually, we're looking, a lot of the sidewalk that was constructed along there actually extends beyond the property line. We'll be pulling that back. So that's, they'll be gaining green space along this whole strip. You can see the white is the existing sidewalk that extends beyond the construction of this, of the new project. So we'll have a wider sidewalk. The road's narrower and will be pulled back from the property line. So we have further discussions with them on that.
And what's the reason having back-to-back roundabouts?
It'll function better than if one was a signal and the other was a roundabout because it'll allow the spacing to kind of continue. If you have a signal at one intersection and a roundabout at the other, you get the green and all of a sudden, you get all this traffic coming through all at once. The other issue is, and you can see it as a... So the warrants right now are really on the First Avenue Southeast intersection, where the signal is today. Columbus, as the numbers show, don't really warrant a signal or a roundabout yet. It will in the future. But we don't want to have to build something later. If you look at the intersection from a pedestrian standpoint down at First Avenue Southeast, there's not a lot of room at that, those corners. I mean, I think, in fact, I think if one had to get a wheelchair by one of those pedestals, the pedestal and the control boxes, I'm not quite sure you can. And we made more room back in 2013, I think it was, when we built that. It was worse before that project, but it's so congested with those pedestals sitting on the corner and the sidewalks. And actually, the roundabouts will actually provide more room for pedestrians on those corners. Columbus Avenue also has been kind of concerned with a lot of residents, a lot of people traveling through that area as far as line of sight, being able to see vehicles crossing that intersection. So when we started into this project, that was one of the things we said, we got to try to fix that. Well, the roundabout, because of it working well with the other one, building for the future, looking into the future and taking care of, we feel will take care of a conflict there or a problem for pedestrians and for traffic to be crossing at that intersection. So one thing that's kind of interesting in the current intersection study is, and when they said that Columbus didn't really warrant a signal... when they said that Columbus didn't really warrant a signal or intersection control yet, because the numbers, for example, coming down Columbus and trying to get on the Main Street weren't high, as high as that would warrant that. And our argument was, well, that's because nobody will go to that intersection and try to get on the Main Street because it is a real bear deal there. And so I think you'll see actually more people utilizing that to get on the Main Street after the roundabouts are there. I guess any other questions on the proposed items? Want to jump real quick to kind of getting back to, to the cost breakdowns as I kind of showed earlier? And again, assessments as a portion of this project. We have actually presented in this study a slight modification to the city's assessment policy. The reason being, and when I say that, so historically, since before, well before I got here, assessments have always been based on a residential unit, so your typical single family residential property, for street improvements, street reconstruction was assessed a fixed dollar amount. And that assessment rate is, was increased project to project as the years went by to kind of account for inflation and things like that. We're proposing to continue that same process method with the residential properties that are on the easterly portion of the project. When it came to commercial properties, we, historically in the past, we even didn't really have any or have many, and they were always all larger properties and we looked at them based on kind of what, how did they equate to a typical single-family property? Being that average single-family residential property being about 75 feet, if we had a commercial property that was 150 feet frontage, we assess two units and assess the metacultural rate. In the downtown here, we have so many properties that are 50 feet wide, 35 feet wide, 25, 75, 80, it just, it just didn't quite fit the methodology that we've used in the past. And I, so I brought, brought it up to staff, a system that we've been using in other communities is using very similar assessment policies, but what they've done is they've dealt with commercial, non-residential properties on an equivalent front foot, front-footage basis. So make a long story shorter or longer hopefully is. What we did is so took the typical single-family residential property, if that's properties typically have 75 foot frontage, we divided by that rate by 75 and we came up with a front-footage rate. We applied that, all those properties and the commercial, the non-residential properties on the front-footage rate to make it a little more, I guess maybe equitable to those that are really small versus some of those that are really big. Follow that?
At the 1.3?
Yeah, and then, yeah, so the rate would be increased by 30% more and be the equal to the commercial rate. So I do, I did have a figure that kind of illustrated that again. There it was. Again, the assessment roll is in the report. So again, yeah, I should have used this illustration. So again, typical single-family residential properties assessed on a one-unit basis. Again, cornered properties would be a half a unit, a half a unit if both sides are being done, or if just one side's being done, there'll be a half a unit on one side. The commercial would be charged across that front-footage basis. We did implement or utilize a, call it a quarter credit to account for the properties that are on corners so that up to a half of an equivalent unit, so 37 and a half feet could be credited, especially for those properties that were assessed in the various projects here in the recent past. So again, it all worked out similar to the way, the way we've done in the past, but this how it was, basically our way to deal with all those properties that were a lot of small, irregular sizes and stuff. Is any question on that? So again, this was, we did present it as, at the neighborhood meeting this way, and did say that this is a modification of the current plan, but this is, this is how we have proposed it in the, in the report and in the assessment.
Does that be communicated to the business owners on there?
Yes, yeah, well, it was, again, it was presented at the neighborhood meeting, we got it on the 26th. The invite to all, everybody on the project was, come to the neighborhood meeting, we're going to talk about assessments. So beyond that, it's, the public hearing coming up and the neighborhood meeting was...
Well, I just want to make sure they're aware of the, I mean, if you look at those rolls, are those business owners going to get a letter stating that this is what the proposed assessment is going to be?
Well, under the practice, it's been, again, following Minnesota statute 429, following our process, the, these are only preliminary at this time, and again, I don't expect a lot of changes, but they don't get their notice of their assessment until the time of the assessment hearing, which will be sometime in the fall of 2020. So unless they check, call, come to one of these meetings, they're not going to know these numbers prior to it. The people I did talk to at the neighborhood meeting, and I, you know, I shared with them what we had, and I didn't have anybody that seemed to have any issues at all with it, so...
House member Brucik was at that meeting, I think they had a total turnout of about between 25 and 30 that weren't attended, so we would have hoped or liked or preferred additional people in attendance, but that's what we got. Notices will go out to all property owners inviting them to, when you get them taken in action, assuming you adopt the resolution, because the letter will be going out inviting them to this meeting in a presentation of what you're essentially hearing tonight to be at the June 4th meet. So we have, we invited them to a neighborhood meeting, we've had other individual meetings, but really the neighborhood meeting was the first unveiling of kind of what you're seeing from you as it relates to any type of assessments. And so we have upwards of...
101, 120?
Yeah, it's, it's like 118, 120.
So we would have preferred more, they'll all get notices following your action tonight to, again, invite into meetings, but...
But the dollar figure is not in that letter, right?
No, it's not, it's invited to the meeting where this will be discussed at the public hearing to let them know, essentially, you're seeing a preview with maybe some revisions in the presentation a little bit, that's what we will go over and share with them following, or as part of that public hearing, that's what's, what's there. No, we don't send out for the public hearing on the presentation of feasibility report because at that point, you haven't even made a determination on whether there is going to be a project, and so we've got to move procedurally through that process. But yes, they are available, and we made that information, we will have it posted on the website everywhere, so people can see what these preliminary would look like.
I'm just wondering if we'd get more participation if we said you're going to be on the hook for $22,000 or whatever it might be?
Well, the difficulty, and I'll have to let Chris respond, is that procedurally we're required to follow very exact steps of the 429 improvement process.
Right.
And so that's what we're procedurally trying to do.
I'm not saying it's wrong, I just think maybe with that information on there, they might want to come in and weigh in as opposed to just the busy...
Well, perhaps, perhaps the notice could just include that, you know, it'll be an overview of the project including preliminary assessment.
The official public hearing notice that basically says that.
Yeah, so that they know that that information at least is available at the public hearing if that might spur some additional...
And the last letter that went out also said the same thing. Last letter that went out just went to the property owners and the business owners, anybody that lives on the street. So we call it a public hearing, but it wasn't advertised as a public hearing or a public meeting, I should say. Neighborhood meeting. We actually sent out invites or a letter saying that, we'll be talking about the process, we'll be talking about assessments, things like that. So that, not saying you're wrong, it just, I think we kind of are trying to do that.
I'm not trying to imply that anything's wrong, I just think the more information that we can give those residents and the business owners, and since we have real numbers here, I know for a fact after this meeting, we gave one of the, one of the business owners a copy of this because he's asked me, how much is the assessment going to be? And I, you know, if that information was included in the letter, I just feel like more people would, because the dollar figures are somewhat high, would be more likely to come to voice their opinions. And I don't know how hard that would be to...
I think that would be...
Well, procedurally, we're not set up to do that quite at this point.
Okay, yeah.
And that required, but that's why we tried to have holding the neighborhood meeting, the public hearings, actually, they indicated that the neighborhood meeting was the worst meeting, that we had an implication on that, and we said that to the property owner, the public hearing notice, we will also emphasize that it gets published and procedures, and so, you know, some part of that, there's a certain amount of responsibility that they need to take to come in or to learn, or they could look onsite or on the website, we'll have that posted as of tomorrow as well, so that people can see that, and assuming Patrick reports that people can go to the website to take a look at it, or they can call us either the engineer or plant, and we could certainly make that available, that procedurally that we're set up to do that kind of later stage in the process, assuming we get to that. And so we don't want to necessarily at this stage, but change, although not likely a whole lot, subject to what we do, and taking a look at our funding aspects as to whether we think we're ready for their changes. But conceptually, this is where it sits.
Yeah, you know, a couple, couple points, you know, reiterate what Mike said, so the notice that actually goes out will actually references contact me if there's questions, as well as the report is available online. So it'll be available on the city's website as well as the project website as well. So again, it's a little complicated, somebody will try to go look that up, but they have referenced that.
They also have to know their own property ID.
Yeah.
And in most cases, unless you go to your tax statements, you're not going to know your own property ID. It is on the notices in the back, as you can see, name, property owner, property ID, address, so it's there, but you have to go through the various pages unless you look for your specific ID and get to it. So that's what we try to help with, people either call or come in to see us, we try to do that, but it will be available for instance if they want to.
Chris, I'm assuming that we are doing the same thing on corner lots as we've done on other street projects?
Exactly, so, yeah, so the residential properties would be assessed at half a unit, and they may have had a half a unit in the past, or some of them are on future projects where they're going to be a half a unit in the future. And again, applying the same methodology or idea with commercial or non-residential properties as well, but applying it as a front-footage credit of up to a half a unit or 37 and a half feet. So again, that was the methodology we used. Comment quick on how firm are these numbers? Again, the street assessments in the past have not been directly linked to what was the bid, it was based on a, on a fixed rate, paid for a certain share of the project, and the rate was adjusted annually as we had, you know, project year to year, so that everybody paid the same, it was, the difference was like an inflationary factor. So this rate that we're showing for reconstruction, street curbing, gutter, this $8,500 per unit residential, thinking this is our base unit, this was taking the last reconstruction project we had in 2014, applying inflationary to the present and then projecting it forward, not to make it sound too complicated. But based on that, you know, that methodology, I see that rate as, I don't see, unless there's some major change or reason, I don't see why that would adjust. The $147.33 for front foot, commercial, again, that's for the front-footage non-residential rates. The numbers that are probably a little bit up in the air here, you can see I've shown them as a range, is the water service, the water service for both properties that are, when I say setback from the right of way, these are properties where we don't have to get into the buildings, we make that connection outside the right of way at the curb stop the way we do for every residential neighborhood and community, versus the water services where we have to get into the building. Again, these numbers are still a little unknown, we may not know, be able to lock down on those numbers until we actually bid the project. So we're showing in the report as a range, so... And then there'll be a number of commercial properties that we know already today that they're going to need six-inch water services coming off the main, so that they can serve that building by a future water, fire service, for example, they want to have compartments in there, things like that, ultimately, they need to do fire service, and so that's going to cost more money as well. So again, we're showing kind of a range on that cost as well. So again, so water services, sewer services are assessed at 100% of the cost, because that property owns it from the property up to the main. In the past, we've always had, pretty straight forward, it's typical, single-family residential service connections. Here, this is a little more complicated, it's a little harder to estimate, and until we bid this out, we won't be able to lock into those numbers. Again, the assessments won't be until fall. So those, again, these are the numbers that were presented at the neighborhood meeting, they were presented as a range and an unknown, and they would be finalized likely after the project was bid. Questions on that?
Chris, you mentioned at that neighborhood meeting that there was a three-quarter inch water service lines, and here you've got one inch.
Yeah, a lot of the old existing are likely three-quarter inch lines. Nothing that right now should go in less than an inch, so, and again, some of them would want to be six inches. And there may be some that have lead as well, so they may be, whatever diameter, inside of a lead line is, it's pretty small. So again, those will be replaced, at least on the buildings that front the right of way up into the buildings.
Okay.
Obviously, for where we're at tonight, your consideration is ordering the public hearing, proposing to hold the public hearing on June 4th at the next council meeting. We are waiting for MINDOT, some of the MINDOT, we call it MINDOT process right now, before we can proceed with design, we're calling it the phase two. There's a scope of work that they're reviewing to cover the work that they need done within the, within a public right of way there. And there'll be a process where the city, the MINDOT will be looking for the city to provide what they call municipal consent, basically a resolution of you acknowledging, yes, we agree with the project as proposed. Obviously, as you leading the project, it's a lot simpler process than if they were just showing up saying, here's what we want to do, and we want okay to do it. So that, we don't anticipate, I'm not, I'm doubtful that that'll happen, that part will be ready on June 4th, so we're guessing that sometime following, either following meeting in June or maybe early July, we'll be coming back for municipal consent, approval of the scope of work, and a approval of engineering agreements to move forward with phase two final design. But at this point, we, again, can schedule that public hearing for, on June 4th. We'd be looking at, working on plans basically nearly a year. This is the final, final design, final construction plans from summer 18 to summer 19, getting final approvals by MINDOT and getting authorization to bid by fall of 2019. Advertising for bids would be late in 19, 2019, and looking at basically a word of bids most likely in January of 2020, so that we can be ready to, ready to start construction as early as possible in 2020. Bulk of the construction would happen in the 2020 construction season, there would be some, I'm guessing, finalization, finalizing and landscaping work maybe that's taking place in 2021. work maybe that's taking place in 2021, potentially. We'd be looking at that assessment hearing in the fall, most likely October, but fall of 2020. I guess that's all I've got, unless there was something I missed or other questions you've got. I'll probably, I'll plan for the public hearing, we'll probably do a real rich version of the presentation that I did at the neighborhood meeting, and then start quite a bit, but try to run through a kind of similar one, kind of here, but a little bit more PowerPoint process, so.
On the page of feasibility study, remember any costs, probably this one, the probable cost one?
Yep.
On the bottom, it talks about the city total. That's including the sewer and water funds, correct?
Correct.
So that's just a grand total?
Grand total.
Okay.
So the city share of sewer and water, hundred percent city. City does have to contribute to a portion of the parking rings, a portion of the sidewalk. MINDOT does cover a very small budget for landscaping, but it's very minor. So again, the bulk of that is covered, bulk of it's covered by that one point seven seven grand. We still, probably, we're anticipating some costs beyond that, again, with all those things factored in.
And also, just for those listening or questions on the special assessments, since they're preliminary numbers, but generally, if I remember correctly, those assessments are for fifteen years for the property owners, right?
Yep. Good question. Yes, for product assessments of this magnitude, the city's done a fifteen-year assessment, for those that let it roll on to their property taxes, let it go to the counties.
Any other questions for Chris? Okay, so you need us to take a motion to have the public hearing next meeting, Mike? Is that what we're looking for?
That's correct.
Okay, I guess I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Dave Bruchek. Any other further comments, questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Thank you, Chris. You're going to do the next one.
I think I'm doing the next one. I don't need this anymore. I guess, before you, for your consideration, is our proposal for engineering services for a preparation of the ADA transition plan, as it's called. As referred to in the memo, this has actually been a requirement since nineteen ninety, is for communities, cities, public entities to plan for how are they going to accommodate persons with disabilities within the public, in the public right-of-way on public infrastructure. The most common thing is pedestrian aprons, sidewalks, you know, et cetera. The standards too, over the last, oh, five, definitely within the last ten years, mostly within the last five years, have gotten a lot stricter. You see some of the newer projects, you know, the pet aprons are a lot smoother and leveler and things like that. But there's been a big push in the last, within the last five years to have communities, public entities prepare what they call ADA transition plans. A plan of inventorying all your access facilities, and what is the plan to bring them up? Are they up to standard? Gathering data on, you know, percent grade on the aprons, what is the width, do they meet standards? And if not, what is the plan to bring them into compliance? And the plan may be well with the next project, or, you know, if it's not terribly out of standard, but it doesn't meet standard, you know, when would this, when should this be done? So the one stipulation they have is, this is obviously a federal requirement, and everybody is supposed to have taken care of this, and Dupre is not unique. A lot of communities have not done this, especially the smaller communities have not done it. But because the city is seeking a federal grant, which is that one point seven seven million ATPS grant, it's going to be, it's a requirement, basically, that entities that are receiving federal funding for projects need to, basically, initiate their ADA transition plans. So we provided a proposal to do that, and that's to do a full inventory, collect the data that's needed, required and needed, using a GPS data collector, where we can record the locations, get the data that's required, percent grades, the width, and find out which ones are in compliance, which ones are out of compliance. And from there, we can develop a plan of how it needs to be dealt with. Now, cover the requirement that's needed for the federal funding, and provide, again, a good database for the city to work with in the future.
Is that citywide?
Citywide, yes.
So it's just not the main street here?
No, no. In fact, we won't do MINDOT facilities, because they've already done that. We have proposed to include the county roads, mostly because we're already talking turnbacks on some of them. We're actually proposing to work some of the cost in and analyzing County Road thirty-seven and fifteen with our proposal with Scott County to take over that project, that they basically cover those costs. And the sewers counting leg, I mean, most of it's our streets, city streets that lead up to the county road. So it just makes sense to get them all, take care of it at this time, collect the data on them, so we know what the situation is with those. And yes, it would be throughout the whole city, all the, everything within the public right-of-way, as well as city public lots. So if we're just off of the lot and the trail, including, you know, towards the buildings and things like that, we'd be checking that as well. Trails, trails as well, sidewalks.
So when you mentioned that it would not include MINDOT areas, that main street, or was the feasibility, part of the feasibility study included the ADA for main street?
Well, because that'll all get addressed with the design, it's really irrelevant on main street. Turn County twenty-one would be the only other leg that'd be a MINDOT leg in town. But MINDOT's already done their own transition plan. So they've already checked everything. They have a plan to deal with it as they make improvements to those areas.
Thank you.
Not included this, but still yet to be done. Likely will require us to take a look at all buildings where we have public access in any buildings, as well as remove all the parks, but the accommodation includes of all parks when ADA perfected. So we're not doing that with this right now. That's another part or chapters that would have to be done as part of that entire ADA plan.
And I think something that, you know, needs to be known is, everything that we've done as far as reconstruction, upgrade in a park or a parking lot or anything, whether it was done ten years ago or done a year ago, we were living to those standards at that point. We expect to find quite a few intersections that probably are not up to the standard today, because it was done long enough ago, or nothing has been done. But we still have to come up with a transition plan. We still have to have this map, I'll call it, or the data showing what it is currently. Does it meet standard? Doesn't it meet standard? So, you know, I want to make it, you know, sure that everybody rests assured that whatever we've been doing, we have been doing up to standard at that time. So there's a lot, there is quite a bit of it out there that either was good then, something might have changed, but it should be pretty minor. We just don't have the plan, and we don't have the data, we don't have the map, we don't have that kind of roadmap as far as where they're at, what's been done, what needs to be done, things like that.
However, if you take a look at the reconstruction work that's been done the last fifteen years, and the standards that were used were seeing changes, or have seen changes in those standards. And if you take a look at the pet access and what's done there, that what was done in compliance a number of years ago may not currently be in compliance.
Chris, is there any problem that if you do this assessment, that it's going to affect this grant?
No, actually, it'd affect the grant if we don't do it.
Right. But I mean, if we do the assessment and they find out, well, you know, seventy-five percent of your pets are, need to be redone and...
There's not a requirement that says when we have to make the corrections, other than if we come back and do new construction or we're making improvements to that, we have to take a look at it. Ie, as an example, even though it's not part of this, is when there's discussion and we're giving to more of an evaluation of working with Scott County and then on Road thirty-seven, as you take a look at some of the sidewalks that come down the hill on the east side of the intersection of Columbus and thirty-seven, as you take a look at some of those coming down the hill, some of those likely won't meet the transition standards. And so that will require us to identify, and that's triggered when the county goes to, where we work with them to take over that, whoever does the work, by doing an improvement to that, that's the time that you're expected to take care of meeting those standards within the right-of-way on that construction project as initiated or undertaken.
Okay.
Mike, where's the twenty thousand dollars coming from? And then, and then if we do spend it, will we get that twenty thousand back within that grant? Pay ourselves back?
No. It doesn't come to us because of the grant. What we're proposing to do is to do this, and this is a cost element, that there's some dollars remaining from the first part of the preliminary design. And if you remember, we had a joint powers agreement with MINDOT on preliminary design. We entered into agreement where we have a contract with SEH, and then we have a contract with MINDOT, and so it's kind of a task as a separate part of that, the work that Chris helped on behalf of the city, related to any work that is preliminarily done, will be a cost that's incorporated into the overall project cost that we will finance in the total project. That piece will have to be funded by us, and at a minimum, likely will be covered under the overall city line debt service tax levy. So there's money left in there, and there's money built into or would be within the framework of the final design that we pick the cost of this project up over those two elements. So basically, twenty thousand dollars would be in the final project cost, and we're having to carry that until we get to that. So I don't have any money in the twenty thousand budget per se to do it. It's not line item anywhere, but we're going to have to incur upfront to be able to be in a position to make sure that we don't, you know, things in place in order to meet the requirements of being able to get that one point seven seven million dollars. And so we'll carry that as part of the preliminary project cost, wrap it into the overall financing in the twenty twenty project.
Thank you.
I move to accept the proposal provided for the ADA transition plan. Second?
Got a motion by Amy Jurick to approve the contract with SEH, second by Maggie Bass. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the fourth.
Yep.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is continued discussion on the fitness center proposal. I was not at that special meeting, but I did read the packet, and I did discuss some stuff with Mike. So I guess, kind of what we really need to do today is, if we have any other questions we need to get aired, or any concerns, from the standpoint of the moving the fitness center under the wing of, I guess, a joint powers agreement, Mike? Is that...
That's what's been proposed.
I think one of the numbers that hasn't popped up is how much the city is going to be asked to help finance. So in the special meeting and in the joint powers committee meeting, we saw a preliminary budget, but there was no line item as far as what our percentage or our portion of that would be. So we should probably get that number before we give a final yea or nay.
And then, when did you envision the examination of the joint powers? Because that's going to have to be reopened and renegotiated, is that not correct?
Well, we obviously, if the council and the school board were to jointly agree to do that, that that would be one of the steps in the process, that we would need to try to go develop language based on the conceptual commitment upfront as to what you're going to do. And I can't at this point, without knowing more from either the school board or hearing from that or from you, what your interest is and how we would go about that. But I'm assuming it's from the discussions, is that Tim is expecting that this be done on a joint fifty-fifty basis, that obviously there's some blending, some cost sharing, personnel and programing that can be done between the two subpieces that are available right now and being used on the aquatic side, likely can be used on the fitness side as well, as far as people entering that or recording that, is that they purchase a system that they believe is workable. Whether it's sufficient to take this on, how that would work, has yet to be decided. I know what the conversation involved with Romeo is that they have a system that they've used over there as well. So I'm assuming between the two parties, we can figure out how and what would need to be implemented to deal with the technology and the access side of that. I can't sit here and tell you that I know exactly what that system is and how it would work, that would have to be developed in the action steps following the decision to move it forward with something like this. I did have a chance to talk to the school, trying to, in anticipation of that question, and I think you had heard, Sandy alluded to something that, taking a look at their analysis of all their construction and our contribution on the additional monies for the boulder boards, the climbing walls, the whippets, and those kind of things, that there were things that we put in there for community use that really were only a hundred percent provided for by the city. Our other contribution went directly to the zero-def pool and the...
Lazy Route?
Well, I was trying to remember the official term.
The channel?
Fortunately, yeah, the channel service, even that that's really where the city's contribution of our one point one million dollars went to. But then with our contribution of the eighty-five thousand dollars that went towards all of those other so-called amenity or pieces that were not included on the school side, and then trying to talk to Tim and look at the numbers there to take that into consideration, the number that he gave me today would be about ninety thousand dollars, that he was talking, a project of about two-hundred thousand dollars, and the number he gave me today. And so I don't have a lot more details other than, I think Sandy had mentioned, is that she took a look at the analysis of what they invested in and some improvements that they made, and taken a look at our contribution. And so of that estimated two-hundred thousand dollar capital project, his assessment or split would be about a hundred and ten school and about ninety city. He also offered, from the benefit of taking a look at it, is recognizing that we don't have that sitting in the budget, we may not have it all at one time, is that he'd be willing to look at them, working with us to, it may be similar to what we did with them on the contribution towards the baseball stadium. If you remember, we entered into a seven-year lease, and they made contributions over that time period. Is he be willing to look at five to seven years, if we wanted to break that down and to, you know, help us be able to budget for that versus having to come up with it all at one time? So I just got that today from him, and trying to look at that in anticipation of that, any question will be before we're done.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's intriguing to add the fitness center in with the aquatic center to get more like a community center, which it seems like a lot of communities are trying to develop. I just saw Belle Plain, theirs went down in defeat type of thing. But one of the concerns I have, and I talked to Mike about it, is the parking is one issue, and then if you're going to have access in two areas, I guess I'm looking, I'm concerned about the security of the children in the building. of the children in the building during the school year, and that type of thing is, how do we make sure that it's not easy for someone to get in to that part of the building? And I don't know if they've worked that out or not. Another concern I have is, and Mike and I talked about it, is about the replacement of the equipment. I think it's something that we should have laid out like we do on our other CIP projects. You know, each department head puts this down. Also, my understanding is if someone came over on the fitness center, they'd automatically be able to use the aquatic center under the same membership. Now, what's the, what happens to the people who are in the aquatic center by themselves? You know, is it an automatic, they get to use the fitness center or this sort of thing? And, you know, we have to, you know, if they, look at that, that type of membership, because right now there's two different memberships, and if you're going to give one a...
From our meeting, that was determined it would all be one.
Right. Both ways?
Yes. Yeah, one membership would be for the aquatic and the fitness, so there would be two types of memberships, or potentially three.
Because, you know, someone would say, well, I'm already a member of Anytime, and now you're going to require me to be...
Okay, I see your point.
Yeah, that sort of thing. Also, you know, another thing, you know, we are, we're kind of entering in an area of business, you know, being in the fitness business, where both the school and the city really haven't been involved in that, and I think the email that I forwarded, and Mike forwarded to you, I think you're going to hear some of those concerns too, is why, are the public entities getting into private business type of things too, so that we need to address. So those are kind of some of the things I wrote down on my sheet before the meeting.
Yeah. I was looking over that letter that we got from a resident, and I guess I'm going to direct a question either to Mary Klimp or to Heather, and help me, I guess, understand a little bit. Now, the, what do you call them? The Silver Sneaker Program, for example, is, as I understand it, that's a program offered to seniors that have, for example, contracts with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Now, would normal fitness centers that we have around town, would they be able to offer those programs to senior citizens? Or is this only through something that has, say, a contract with the fitness center?
Dave, I think I can answer that. The Silver Sneakers and Fitness, Silver Fit, is actually part of a Medicare plan that is offered. I don't know if it's just through private insurance companies like a Blue Cross Blue Shield, or if you have Medicare, Part A, Part B, that it's also included. But those programs are available to Anytime Fitness and SNAP Fitness. And all it is, is that the person uses that facility, and then there's a flat fee that is paid to those fitness centers. And I, I'll throw out a number, I don't know if it's like three dollars or five dollars. So this way, that senior doesn't have to pay a monthly membership fee, it's just a per time that they use it, and I believe that they're limited to the number of times that they can use it. Is that, is that the understanding, Mary?
They are not limited to the number of times they can use it. The entity gets paid for up to twelve times per month. They can use it as often as they want, but the reimbursement is stopped at twelve times per month, and it is three dollars a time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other questions or concerns? I mean...
No, I guess I'm in favor of it. I think it's not a bad deal for either the school or the city. My only concern was this one individual that wrote a letter to you, and I thought, well, are we really interfering with private enterprise? And I think some of the programs that we're able to offer are probably not available to most fitness centers.
Right, so those programs are not indirect competition, because the Anytime Fitness and the SNAP Fitness are more of a hands-off model, where you are a member, but there isn't somebody there generally staffing. There might be an orientation on equipment provided, maybe not, but there aren't staff members there while you're working out, it's strictly come and use it, you know, at your own time and at your own risk. Whereas the model that we're looking at here, and the information that Mary and Heather provided, is that the programming would be more extended, and the Mayo would be involved in some of that programming. I think it would be a fabulous benefit for our senior population, and multi-generational, but with the community room there and a full kitchen, there's a place for socialization, which is very, very important for some of our senior population. And then the Mayo would be offering, Mary, if you want to say anything more, please come on up, I feel like I did a good thing. You know, they would be offering some clinics for diabetes control, nutrition. I believe they have a program, so if you're going to have a hip or knee replacement, a joint replacement, you can come in and get information about that. So it kind of broadens the spectrum.
We'd be very interested in continuing to be the nodal partner of this, and so, much like Maggie said, cooking classes for diabetics, the socialization, joint replacement classes. You may be familiar with a Fit Kids program we had at the elementary school for many years, and it kind of got tired over time, a little predictable, but trying to resurrect that for the preschool population, and starting healthy habits then, as well as helping with a transition for someone who's had surgery, and our fitness center is working with them, having the opportunity to help transition them to all the services that are available through a multi-generational community center, so that they maintain that level of fitness after they've recuperated and not necessarily fall back. So an indoor walking trail, and those kinds of things that we might not have now, that could certainly be expanded. And I think as this opportunity came to light, it drew even more attention to the limitations the fitness center has in its current location. It's limited by its four paws, and the opportunity to have a gym, have a walking path, have anything beyond the cardiac, the group fitness classes, is just out of reach for us. We have thirty-eight parking places, some of those obviously were taken by staff, and so we were encringing on neighbors and the street for parking. And I believe there's over two hundred parking places in the two locations at the school, so more than, you know, six times more than what we currently had where we were, and so great opportunities for that expansion. I think one of the highlights that we saw was the opportunity for seniors. And a few years ago, at the fitness center, we took part of a locker room space and put a coffee pot, and I think there's about six chairs, and from about seven-thirty in the morning till ten-thirty, eleven o'clock in the morning, it is occupied, standing room only. Class doesn't start till eight-thirty, but they're there well before, because that's their, that's their entertainment, that's their socialization. And being able for them to expand into the community room, I think that part of the senior engagement will really grow. Any other questions?
Well, you obviously saw the proposed budget.
Yes.
I guess I had a couple of questions. One is, explain to me about the daycare part. How is that, I mean, there was, it just says we'll need to break even, and I didn't understand. Maybe you can shed some light, how they do daycare now at the fitness center?
I can share how we do daycare now, and we offer drop-in daycare coverage from, I think it's about nine-thirty in the morning till eleven-thirty, it covers class time, and then again, late afternoon. And what we do is we recruit daycare attendants that, in lieu of their membership fee, cover so many hours a week. And it's usually a really strong way to pull in both memberships, but also people who want to work out that maybe just can't afford the fee, and so they work three hours a week, and that covers their membership fee. That was unique to the fitness center. We certainly weren't imparting that it would be something like that with the school, but there's different opportunities to look at that. We used to charge for that, we dropped the fee a few years ago, because we found we didn't want any barrier to somebody wanting to come in and work out. Other questions?
What did you feel, how did you feel the budget? I mean, did you feel that looked pretty realistic?
I felt it looked very realistic. I think when I look at the equipment, and I know that's always a concern about equipment replacement, the Cybex equipment, I think, will be here for years. It's built, strong, and Maggie, you probably know, it's steel, it's whatever. It's twenty-seven years old, but other than occasionally having to reopposture a seat or get a new hand grip, there's very little maintenance to that required. Some of the cardio equipment, it needs refurbishing now and then. Rarely did we go out and buy new. Second Wind, who is also the vendor that the school has looked at, has been a great partner in keeping things operational and replacing only what's needed. There are times, if you walk through the fitness center, you'll see some cardio equipment that looks fairly antiquated. That's oftentimes the most favored piece of equipment, and so just because something looks old doesn't mean everybody wants the latest and greatest. They may want that basic treadmill. And so it is a combination. We have several treadmills that you wouldn't necessarily run on anymore, but they're great for walking. And there's a lot of people that don't run on a treadmill, they just want to walk. So it's really looking from year to year. Rarely did we spend more than five to seven thousand a year in replacing a piece of cardio equipment, and it was usually refurbished.
Since this came out in the paper, how's the reaction been towards you or Heather, you know, the Mayo on this?
I think we both can speak to that. I've had a few emails asking questions, not necessarily understanding the detail or jumping to conclusion, of which I've responded and received answers back, oh, that explains that. I've also received many emails saying, this makes sense for new prey, to have one entity that people can swim at, have the gym. I think probably one of the overwhelming comments is the access to the open gym and the pool, but we don't have that, and that's amiss.
Can you comment, just to clarify, if this, just to make sure, with the competition, just to put out some rumors?
Sure.
If this, from what I understood, was because Mayo Clinic has determined that this isn't part of the mission, they're going to focus areas and others. So if this did not go through, there still wouldn't be a health fitness center, correct? On the Mayo side, or how?
We would continue it for a while. Whether we would continue it for long term, that would be, yet to be determined, for several reasons. One, it really is, it's not the same as twenty-seven years ago when it was first opened. Healthcare is different, and our needs to look at our core business is stronger. We currently lease space downtown for our pediatric therapy program, and the opportunity to have that under the same roof with our adult therapy and use some of the same providers, it becomes a security issue, having one person downtown in the building providing care. So there's a real strong desire and need, and it's been present for several years, of wanting to bring that in. We also have seen that our membership has been very stable, but not growing, and when you ask or inquire about that, it's oftentimes because they want access to more services. There are people that drive from here and go to Dakota to be able to access the pool or other services. And where we haven't grown, we've seen people some drop off, and we get some new ones, so we stay right around that thousand members. Every January, you think we're going to grow, because we'll see three hundred go through the fitness center in a day, but now this time of year, it drops off a little bit. Memberships typically are annual memberships, so we maintain the membership, and we see those people coming back, but to, of a community this size, not to be able to grow it, that's been a concern for us also. So we're offering a basic service that really hasn't expanded in a few years.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mary? Appreciate your input.
Thank you very much.
So what do we want to, do we need to get some questions answered? Do we need to, you want to make some action?
I'd like to move forward, but I really'd like to see how the joint power, we have all the information on the table, including Maggie's point, to see the, more of the financial stuff, and then I'd like to see how the new joint powers agreement would work and how it would be renegotiated, before I can make a final decision.
I would, I would want a firm commitment on the dollar amount, you know, instead of around ninety K, and I think it's important that, you know, we really make sure that that budget that was presented to us is completely up to date, including daycare, how they might want to handle that. I haven't seen any type of, really, of a business plan, you know, or a preliminary of what build-out's going to be, I mean, there's, but maybe some of those details actually should be the joint powers committee looking at it as opposed to the council. From council's perspective, it's the upfront contribution, and then the ongoing revenue, potential revenue gain or loss, when you combine it with the aquatic facility. What would that projection look like?
Yeah, that was one of my notes, I'd like to see a combined analysis done, rather than just, you know, here's the fitness center type deal, what that would look like, because that would show us our real exposure, so I think we need to do that. I know Mary mentioned Dakota, I don't know what else, Dakota, besides, I think they must have racquetball courts too there at Dakota. Besides that, I don't think they have any other amenities besides the pool and the fitness equipment and the gym.
I think that's about it.
Yeah.
They have an arena, and I don't know if that's part of it also.
Hockey, yeah. Okay. So, you know, if you look at the area, that would probably be our direct competition from that standpoint. So Mike, do you think you got enough to kind of, I see you scribbling over there, I was just, can't you read our minds?
Sometimes. Not always, but yeah.
You don't want it sometimes.
You know, I think part of what, the school will be looking at this on May twenty-ninth, I think they've got it next week after Labor Day, is that, you know, some of the details, and obviously I'll have to go back and talk to Tim and the school district, has to work into trying to develop some of these answers. The joint powers language, that's going to take a little bit of time to do, we won't be able to get that done overnight, but... We won't be able to get that done overnight, but it would have to be modeled along, you know, some people looking at the contribution and financial operations and emerging the revenues, because obviously, taking a look at it, I'm not certain whether the school would proceed at this point if we were to choose not to do it. And so I think that looking at doing this, if there's an indication that you're leaning one way or the other, that at least that we'll let the school know, subject to trying to get more details and answers on some of this. I think some of the questions that came up last week when we had the meeting and tried to look at some of this is that until you put the two parties together and working maybe with the joint powers board, it's very difficult to come up with all of the operational answers as to how you're going to do certain facets of putting this together. That, you know, to take a look at that, I think the school is looking at, at least from Tim's perspective, I think looking at trying to watch and move quicker versus longer. I think it's appropriate that we do our due diligence and get you the information that enables you to have a comfort level. The question I don't know at this point, as far as trying to get answers to all of these items and some of the others that I think are generally there, is that may take longer and may impact the timing of what I think he was anticipating from being able to look at, wanting to move forward with getting the construction initiated, while some of this could be worked on. One of the things that wasn't mentioned is that in the partnership is that Mayo was willing to make Heather Teats available on a halftime basis between now and the end of the year to help put together some of the information and inquiries, you know, relative to either the marketing, you know, coordination of more work on the budget and the implementation and working with members and programming and all those elements that our current experience and past experiences give her some insight into that process, working with some of the school district staff. So it's, it's difficult other than taking some of your primary questions up front and talking with him to see how quickly that we think we can assemble this to be able to report back. But I know they're going to be looking on the 29th whether they'll make a decision and whether they're going to need more time. I don't know. But I know in taking a look at trying to develop that joint powers language that it depends on how in-depth we want to go and what you might be looking for there versus how we model it similar to what's in the aquatic side of that. So we've not gone anywhere in any detail trying to anticipate what that has to be. So that would be, speak of Heather Sheehan.
Speaking of Heather.
I could let her expand on some of that maybe to clarify what that offer is and how she might be able to assist both the city and the school in that process.
Yeah, you brought it up, so I thought I would maybe answer a few questions. So really generously, I think Mayo has offered 0.5 of my salary through the duration of the year to assist with this transition because it's, for multiple reasons, really important to us is that ease and transition for our members. Obviously, our members are a big priority in this process and we want to make sure, you know, that transition happens as smoothly as possible and to keep them engaged with health and wellness and move them on. Tim DiBerner has made it very clear that in this transition, the intent is to maintain pricing, you mentioned that earlier, both for existing fitness center members and for existing aquatic center members. And then they would, I believe, would potentially have the opportunity to, as soon as this transition happens, to have the ability to move over. Also, I'm really excited about it because I have a little bit of a passion. I was a pool employee here in 1989 through 1992 in the outdoor pool. But also my background is in retail, sales, hospitality, and marketing. And so my background, I come from the Mall of America. I managed the aquarium there, opened that property and managed it for 10 and 1/2 years. And so I think there's some really exciting opportunities that the main budget that you've all seen is, is a little better than, it's very realistic. I think we've probably underestimated the opportunity. If you look at our current fitness center members, we don't even offer a membership for anyone under age 14. So the opportunity to expand that family membership concept, I'm going to sign up for it right away. My kids can come swim while I'm working out. I'm ecstatic about that. But they can't be members of the fitness center because we don't service that, that age bracket. So I think our preliminary figures are really actually pretty conservative in that realm. So I think there's lots of opportunity for growth. I also think a lot of the additional programs that the new, whatever we end up calling it, community center, fitness and aquatic community center of sorts, there's things that we can do for community programs that are beyond what anybody's even talked about yet. And so I hope to be able to share a lot of that in my background in those kind of programs as well. So I don't know if that helps or if you have any additional comments.
What about the staff, obviously at the fitness center? Any feedback from them or?
Yeah.
Obviously, I'm sure they're probably a little uncertain on what the future holds.
That's a very fair question. We've had our managers, they've been attuned to this since February when conversations started, so, and then we brought in the rest of our staff prior to the press release going out to the community. And definitely a concern, the hope is though, although I won't be part of that hiring process, the hope is, we have very skilled and incredible fitness instructors. So the hope is, and I would think that the school is going to be excited to bring over as many of those instructors as possible to keep the continuity with our members and to keep those great programs moving. And I think that's, you know, that would be in their best interest and their intent. So they're, they're, they are what makes us different than, as Maggie mentioned, some of those limited service fitness programs. That's what makes us different, our classes and our staff to support our members. So I think that's really important and hopefully I can be helpful in that transition of making sure. And also, I would say our two fitness center managers right now are instrumental in feeding me with information a little further down in the level of detail that I can then bring over to this new potential opportunity.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we proceed probably conservatively to advance this. I don't see that, except for Mayo, there's another possibility here in town that we'll continue on with what they have started. I think between the city and the school, we can not only continue what they've started but maybe expand on it. And I hate to see the momentum get lost. So I'd like to suggest that we send positive vibes, if you will, to the school to say that, well, let's proceed with whatever we have to do to make this work.
Okay. So I got a motion?
I'll second. And Dave, to add on, I'd just say that we will work in good faith. That's pretty typical contract language, but that, those words really hold a lot of meaning. Knows that we go into this, pie's wide open.
Okay, thank you. So I got a motion in a second. Are you going to say something, Mike?
And that motion is to proceed conservatively to advance the concept and obtain answers to the questions to make this work between the city and school.
Correct, with Maggie's addition.
In good faith.
In good faith.
So I guess, in layman's terms, is to proceed cautiously, but we definitely want to proceed. Okay. So I got a motion in a second. Any other comments or statements?
I do. For, I just want to, there's a lot of rumors going around and the indoor pool is not failing. It's not failing. We're reevaluating because the usage is down from where we wanted to. So this is one of the suggestions of looking at different ways to do revenue. One is to increase the usage, and this would help increase the usage, but also it would help the residents with the choices. Because, for example, with Silver Sneakers, they have to choose one, whether they needed the pool for the joints or the fitness center for working out and socialization. They have to make a choice, where now their choice would be easier because depending on the day, depends on what kind of services they could use. And that would be intergenerational choices that would help. So that's why I was in favor of it. I would like though to, to know, I agree, what the difference of joining the two and how that's going to reflect, how that's going to help that joint expense revenue.
Well, I see that as something that can be worked out between the two of us.
Correct.
Like we did with the current joint powers.
But I also, I just sort of want a little of like, this is why we're doing it.
Yeah. I think you, and maybe I'm, you know, thinking as an accountant as I am, I want to see, you know, here's the aquatic center by itself, here's the fitness, how would this look combined, you know, with, you know, what kind of managers we're going to need and this sort of thing, you know, the big picture rather than, well, we got this piece and this piece, let's just join them. You know, I think we need to sit down and, and make sure that we don't duplicate, you know, jobs and we make sure that, you know, maybe a manager at the fitness center can, you know, help manage the aquatic center. I don't know, but I think we need to look at both entities separately, how they're run now and how would a joint entity look.
And some of that was discussed at the joint powers committee meeting as well as the special meeting, and unfortunately you weren't able to attend due to some other responsibilities. But I think maybe that's where we could have a working session together with the school, with the Mayo and with the joint powers committee, you know, really hammer out some more of those details that we're all questioning.
Any other comments? Okay, I got a motion in a second. There's no other comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Thank you, Mary and Heather. Okay, Mike? Is Bruce taking this one? You're awfully quiet today, Bruce. You got the big victory under your belt.
I don't know, it's time to.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay. I know this has been a discussion. Sean, when did you first bring it up? Over a year ago ourselves?
Yeah, a year or anything.
So now we're at the point that I think Mike and the department heads have evaluated the situation and have discussed it and now kind of want to discuss with the council and make sure that we can accomplish what we all intend to do here.
Well, if you recall, at March 12th, a meeting that we had, we were discussing, taking a look at priorities for 2019. This matter, as you mentioned, Mary, came up and while the framework talked about the goal of updating the city's personnel policy, in the meantime, recognized how lengthy a process and project that would be, some of the issues associated with the elements that I've highlighted from that meeting, the discussion that the overtime policy is in need of possibly changing, it may not be consistent with the communities' practice. The concern for internal practice of applying the policy differed amongst some departments, even though it still might be compliant with the federal law. And so the request was, is there an attempt to take a look at revising the policy, bringing it forward with the idea of a possible implementation date about June 1st? Some of the other parts were the budgetary issues that we're looking at, that'll take a little bit longer to do. And so what we attempted to do, and we spent the better part of April, excuse me, the latter part of March and all of April and the first part of May, taking a look at the overtime policy in our department head meetings and taking a look at various practices and how it was being implemented, how it was being used, what was being done, what were some of the challenges? And then if there were to be any changes, did it impact in the other areas or segments of the personnel policy? And attempting to do that. And the one that comes along with this is the discussion on holidays as it relates to normally our overtime policy versus working on Sundays and holidays. And the question that came into play there and taking a look at it is that, as you see in the materials that I provided, is that we have holidays that have been identified for a certain date but are not always the actual holiday themselves. And so if we take a look at that and we'll get into that further when we take a look at holidays, for example, if you use this past year, Christmas was, December 25th was a Sunday. Our holiday for purposes of citywide was considered the following Monday, which would be December 26th, when we would be closed and people would take that as the holiday. So we wanted to make sure as we were dealing with the overtime policy, where would overtime be paid? Would that be paid on that Sunday, the 25th, or would it be paid on our observed holiday? So that issue, trying to address that, required us to take a look at getting into language associated with what we believe need to be dealt with as far as overtime being paid on observed holiday versus maybe the actual holiday. So that comes as part of it. And so we've attempted to do both the overtime policy and the holiday policy is to provide a copy of what the current policies are and then the proposed changes that we have and in some cases some comparative analysis, both on the overtime and holidays that Patty put together. And then also a copy of the US Department of Labor Wage and Hour Division as it relates to what we're required to do for overtime and when do ours not typically get counted for calculation of the overtime. The other thing is we try to go through and to take a look at this, and then as we take a look at this, is you have to understand in some of the discussions that occurs when people are looking and trying to compare us to different entities, is you have differences as to whether you're looking at the personnel policies for non-union employees versus whether you start to getting into taking a look at the public language that's in play in many of the surrounding communities that are in the actual public union situation for public works employees, parks employees, utility employees. And as you look at the information that we have in here, and it really doesn't go into much in depth on that, but then taking a look at that, eight out of the 10 neighboring communities that we used, the information that we attempted to provide to on the last page of the comparative information, we don't really show this, but I'm just saying, of the 10 area cities that we used, including Savage, Pride Lake, St. Peter, Wasika, Jordan, Bell Plain, the Alcoa Market, La Sura, Lonsdale, and ourselves. Outside of ourselves and Lonsdale, all of the other cities have employee unions in the public works, public utilities, and parks and reeves. So only two of us don't have that. So when you hear people talking about looking at what we want to do, is there a difference between public works unions, public utilities unions versus what's in non-union personnel? And right now, because we only have the one place union, we have no other union, has we tried to develop language to deal with some of this, is that whatever is developed and put into play has to try to make sure that it deals with all of those elements because as of right now, everybody's in the non-union or personnel policy side of things. It's not the union environment. So that's what took us some time going through all the discussion to try to get here tonight. And, you know, what you have was done in conjunction with a lot of interaction with the department, as you see here. Jim gets a bit of a break, but we have the separate police unions, so most of this doesn't really affect him or cause him any concerns or issues, but he was a party in the discussion. So what you see is being recommended by the department, the entire department head team, the strong debate on any number of elements, but we're trying to, through consensus, to reach what we're recommending to you tonight. And probably one of the biggest items in the transition of all of this information is the practice that we is the practice that we've done, even though it's compliant with the Fair Labor Standards Act, is the pieces related to how overtime was, or hours that were worked that were being put into overtime in one departmental area, everything that was earned over 40 hours, the department had to ensure that time and half was paid. In the other area under public works involving street, parks, and wastewater, there was an adjustment of work schedules, that if hours were earned within the work period, you have to understand in order for us to be compliant there, we have to have a defined work week, which is Sunday beginning at 12:00 AM, I believe it is, and going until the next Saturday at 11:59 is our defined work week. So within that work week, you have to work more than 40 hours in a work week in order to be eligible for overtime at time and a half. Within that framework that we've done that is compliant with the law is that if employees worked early on in the process, just about in the process, but in the work week, and there was time that schedules could be adjusted, that was done from the economic account to not necessarily have to pay overtime and to reduce payroll costs in that respect. Not that we weren't not paying over time in accordance with the law, but they weren't getting to hours in a work week that were greater than 40 because of the adjustment in the latter part of the work week. Now, that could only be done within that seven day timer, and you can't carry over, let's say somebody works from a snowplowing standpoint, 10 hours on Sunday at the beginning of the work week, that if there was time and gave ability based on work needs, where you could send the employee home or adjust the work schedule in the latter part of the work week, they didn't get 40 hours or over 40 hours to have to pay overtime. What you're seeing and what we're recommending is that, and that has been a practice that has been in play long before I arrived, and I think it had to do with economics. So the two situations I've described, both are legal under the Fair Labor Standards Act, which is the guiding light to what we're required to do as we administer overtime. The one other caveat that comes into play with that, and again, it varies amongst those cities that either just have non-union personnel or have a public works union contract, is that under the defined work week in order to earn overtime, if an employee has to work more than 40 hours in a week, and that vacation sick leave and holidays do not count as far as hours worked and worked. Effectively, if you're out sick or you're on vacation, you're on holiday, you're not working. And so under the Fair Labor Standards Act, it didn't require if any of those hours corrupted that work week, even though you may have worked, or you had hours that exceeded 40 hours, unless you actually had worked for a full 40 hours, you wouldn't be entitled for overtime at time and a half because you did not work. If you had an eight hour holiday, or you were out sick, or you had any vacation in there, you did not physically work 40 hours that work week, so you weren't eligible for that. So we talked amongst the staff that even though we don't have any policy language that we're recommending, that would be an adjustment factor that we would do with your concurrence, is that we would move away from, at whatever point or time of adoption, is that we would move away from making adjustments in an employee's work week. I.e., when I was talking about Barb sitting next to me, that where we have her tonight, it would be a two hours plus. In the past, what's been done is we've worked with, formerly it was Mary Jo, then it was Deb, and now Barb, is we would adjust the work week and allow her to take off whatever time she has worked tonight over beyond her normal eight hours, is that she would take up that time if it was able to be done, so that she didn't work more than 40 hours in the work week, thus not invoking the need to pay any overtime at time and a half. And so that situation has been in my office, has been in parks, streets, in wastewater, have been the predominant areas that I think, under Glenn's tutelage, that he inherited from his former public works director, albeit on the other side in water and electric, Bruce's demands and needs into the minimal number of employees that he's got in those two respective areas. He hasn't chosen to adjust the work week, that he's just allowed it to accumulate and end up just paying at time and a half. Or if the employee wanted to take time off for that, I think that was allowed to be done in the process. So we've talked about one of the major changes that we can do within this framework is to move away from that, but without specifically changing any language in the policies that we have, because specifically, under both state law, is that we, as a city, whether it's under a union or we know, or a non-union, is that the city is and will be the sole authority in determining work schedules, and that we have a right to adjust those work schedules. And, but what we're saying is that if desires are improved by the council, that we would move away from attempting to adjust those work hours in adjusting the work week. And so in the case of Barb sitting next to me, is that we would never work the 40 hours and get the time at time and a half overtime for the hours that she works in days and minutes. Same thing if we have, somebody has to come in on a weekend, imparture in the other areas on a Sunday or a work week, that the hours were adjusted. So it would be a philosophical change fundamentally, in which we have the right to do, that does not necessitate any need for change, other than council can form confirmation that that's where we would like to go. So that's probably one of the biggest things in the change of this practice is not adjusting work schedules to accommodate that, thus resulting in all those areas where we do not do that, likely will encounter additional financial obligations on behalf of the city to pick up overtime in some of those respective areas versus current practice in some as I've described, by not adjusting work schedules and sending employees home. So that's probably the first biggest change in this whole mix. To be able to do that. Other parts of that is in trying to make sure that we already have, you know, language in there that presently you have to work the 40 hours, hours worked under the definition do not, and we're not recommending the change to include vacation, sick leave, and paid holidays. We have, we say, and we continue that under the proposed policy changes, is that the rate of overtime for Sundays is two times the regular hourly rate. There's no change in that. One of the ones I did discover is part of revisiting this with the department heads and the Finance Department, and Patty's not here to answer some of those questions. She's off duty today. That in paragraph number two under the proposed policy changes is an attempt to bring to current practice, excuse me, to bring to current wording in the personnel policy, the practice that on the surface didn't appear to be actually what was actually occurring, and that is the rate of overtime paid for holidays, or where I had the word on the observed holiday, is two times the regular hourly rate of pay in addition to the regular holiday pay. That before, the language was the rate of overtime for Sundays and holidays will be two times the hourly rate of pay. And there was an exception in there. So what we are attempting to do is to bring what has been past practice, even though it may not actually tie out to the language of the repair, it appears that sometime ago, prior to my arrival about 10 years ago, and before that, I don't know, is the practice of the wording versus the actual language appeared to be inconsistent. So what we're attempting to do with this language is to bring the current practice to actuality versus what was being done. And I don't know if you caught that, if you take a look at that, but, you know, that there's a difference in that as far as the rate of overtime paid for the holidays would be two times the regular hourly rate in addition to the regular holiday pay for those hours that they would have to work on a holiday. In asking Patty in Finance, there is not historically, and I guess I'd have to turn to Glenn or to Bruce because most of them come out of their areas, I don't really know of where we've had any significant work that occurs on holidays when people are generally regularly scheduled off, have they?
Oh, it would be Snowa Dan's, emergency sewer backups, things like that, as a rule? No, but good job. You had Christmas in there, you got...
Thanks, Gary. And then as we have further discussion on that, as we take a look at it specifically in the wastewater areas, we've become more capable of handling technology changes, is that as we've gone to the new technology, that formerly if somebody who's on call or who is on standby to handle a call, if an alarm goes off at the wastewater plant and you cover, Glenn, we have staff on board till, what, 3:30, 4 o'clock?
Quarter four or 4:15, depending on your schedule for that week.
And so when then they go home, we still have an obligation to make sure we can take care of that plant should something arise and something go off. Well, with new technology, they're capable of either through their telephones or laptops that we send home, that they can pull up and access the plant through that technology, and if need be, they can take a quick action on that technology to avert having to come in. That if we didn't have that technology and they get a call and they come in under our current policy, is that employees called in for work after a normal workday are compensated for a minimum of two hours. Here, if they're able to go on their phone or the laptop or what have you, we've tried to identify that spending any time, you know, the minimum of 15 minutes and seconds of 15 minutes, depending on how long it takes to handle that issue. So we've tried to clarify that and bring that into practice in regards to the overtime because it's easier and less costly, even though it still would be overtime, to do it through that use of technology than it would be is, okay, I got an alarm on my phone, I gotta go in. And, you know, effectively, they can do the same thing when we got it at the plant, that they go down on their phone and home. So it's enabled us to be able to react quicker and more timely with that wastewater plant. Doesn't take all calls into consideration that way. In some cases, they actually physically would have to come to the plant. And under our current overtime is if they're called in after work, they're compensated for a minimum of two hours, even if it only took them an hour to handle the call. We did add clarification in there where it would not be that if it was an early report for duty or an extension of an existing shift, the two hour minimum requirement for compensation does not apply. And then the last one was a minor change in the overtime policy that where we have the maximum pay, and some of these might not necessarily be in this segment of the personnel policy if we were redoing the whole policy, but at this point, since we're not taking that on, we had a provision in there as we reviewed is that what the maximum pay for a new part-time or temporary employee could be, would be compensation up to 80% of the amount received by the lowest paid full-time employee doing a similar job. We've encountered in the electric arena, and we try to bring on this part-time reserve insurance in that respect, that as we take a look at that, is that it might need to be more and able to recruit some of those relative to the competitive situation that exists in that job classification or class. And so what we try to do is to add some language of that unless it was recommended by the department, it improved by myself, that it would be something different than what is authorized here. So those are the recommendations that the staff has come up with in regards to doing that. We attach to that just to copy of the Fair Labor Standards Act. Copy of the information about whether you typically would include or not include holiday vacation or sick leave as far as in the calculation of overtime. As you look at the holiday section that goes with that, you can see what the language was on pages five and six. And then on seven, what we're trying to do is, under section A, is that instead of official, we changed that to observed holidays for the reasons that I've already described. B is the delineation as referred to on the overtime page, is that non-exempt employees, that being the department heads and myself, excuse, we are non-exempt who are required to work for this question. Excuse me. Forget that. I didn't mean the non-exempt employees. That's really intended to be for, yeah, the non-exempt would receive that kind of overtime pay as we clarified in the previous overtime policy. Exempt employees, if we have to come in, it's just part of the job that we don't get any extra compensation for that. Patty, in her review of the holidays, and we can come back, and it's up to you that there has been any change for the tenures that I've been here and taking a look at the number of holidays, as she did her comparison with the other communities. If you go to actually page B, it's kind of a better overview of what we looked at in here, and on the holidays, it showed the number of holidays, the number of floating holidays, and the total holidays. And as you can see, for the most part, we're right in the ballpark as far as the number of holidays per se. Floating holidays, which were in addition to those holidays, are extra above the, three of the 10 cities, including us, did not have that. And so then if you added those together for the total holidays, you can see we're a little bit shy of what the comparison was. But the other reason, going back to the beginning, as far as the calculation of overtime, this was put together looking at those cities' personnel policies and the union contracts. And so as you take a look at that, the question for non-union, and I verified some things with Amy, you know, or Bell Plain, and there is a difference as we take a look at this in the non-union comparison versus when we were looking at union language in public works, public utilities, contracts, it might be different. But as you can see, what Patty tried to show you is that Savage is the only one in the neighboring communities in the non-union employee group that includes holiday vacation and sick leave as far as hours worked in the calculation of overtime. All of the others do not. Some specifying better than others is what she was trying to get, those that she says no one over 40, is that in order to get overtime, it does not include the holiday vacation sick leave, you'd have to work over 40 hours. And so essentially, the only one in that analysis, which is kind of a part of the guiding look that we looked at, we also talked with the city attorney's office, we talked with the Leaks of the Cities, and so that's why you're seeing this based on this comparison as well as those contacts and looking at the federal law, which is why we're not necessarily recommending that vacation sick leave and holidays be included as hours worked in the calculation of earning overtime. That's an awful lot to provide a total, but I think that that reasonably summarizes the work that we've been doing over the last couple of months, trying to look at these policies, that just when we thought we had it worked out right and would come back when we drew, something else would pop up, like how does this apply or how does this interact with the policies? So that's why it's taken us till now to be able to bring back the recommendations to all of these slides.
Okay. Any questions? No questions?
No, but I just want to make an observation, Mike, I know that, you know, you use Barb as an example, but that is a little different than what these guys were doing in the sense that if they worked overtime like she's doing right now, you'd give her two hours or three hours, she could pick that time, basically. She could pick that time, basically. I want to come in late on Wednesday, or I want to go, I want to go home early on Friday, where in the street department and public works arena, it was Glenn telling them, you're going to go home on Wednesday, you're going to go home on Thursday, to balance out those hours. And I understand that the jobs are different, he has to have a minimum set of people, but it's not really apples to apples. So...
It's as apples to apples as I can make...
Oh, no, no, no.
In the process, that in taking a look at it with the employer retaining the ability to schedule, that in looking at that from the public works side of his operations covering parks, streets, and wastewater...
Right.
Is that they took a look at what that work was for the week, and he made, yes, the decision, working with the department supervisor, when those hours would be adjusted based on looking at what our work schedule was. The same thing occurred between Barb and I or Mary Jo and in the office, as we took a look at trying to determine what needed to get done and how could we accommodate that time out of that work week to enable us to not have to pay overtime.
Right.
So there might have been more input in that respect because I didn't have to deal with multiples of employees in that regard. But the ability is to choose to schedule to not occur the overtime is what was attempted to be done in that process. And we have to do it if we did it at all was within that work week. If there wasn't sufficient time to adjust the work schedule, and let's say that time was earned on either a Friday or a Saturday, and we could not adjust the work schedule, then yes, in fact, it had to be paid out in time and cap, which did occur as well.
Right. No, and I agree, I just wanted to make that point that, you know, you, with Barb's situation, there was just a little bit more flexibility than in Glenn's. And I find that really, this could have all been, it's funny that all those cities except us offer comp time, which was the one issue that we didn't have to pay one and a half times. All they wanted to do was not be told to go home on a, you know, I have to come in and miss my family and everything else on Saturday, and then you give me a Wednesday off when everybody else is at work and nobody's home and like kids aren't home and, you know. If we would have just did comp time like all the other cities did...
Yeah, and everybody went on Friday afternoon off, and then if some problem would have been at your house, you'd have been pissed in the moment.
No, no, no.
Let's talk about the comp time.
Yeah, let's talk about that. That isn't true though, Chuck, because it wasn't everybody. They still all agreed that they went off, you had to put time in, you know, you had to put...
They used to offer a comp time program to do that, where instead of paying employees time and a half, the employee had the right to have that time and a half converted to comp time.
And then them pick when they accommodate.
Let me finish on that process, that in, under the law, under federal law, and as we deal with this, we have to provide reasonable time off with a request, that we have to be able to take a look at the work operations, what projects are ongoing, and have to provide reasonable time off based on a request that comes from an employee. I wasn't here when the city council chose to, with, I presume, staff recommendation from the administrator likely, these gentlemen can answer better than I can because that was all taken care of many years before I got here. City used to have a compensatory program. The challenge in doing that, and it sounds easy to deal with, that instead of having to pay overtime, we just give people comp time. The difficulty is, is that with small numbers, small numbers of employees in different departments, the ability is to make sure that employees get all of their vacations in and get their time off, and then have to, on top of that, to then accommodate additional time off because you allow comp time to accumulate up to 40 hours, 60 hours, or whatever number of hours. The challenge historically has been, and I've had it in other organizations, is giving all that time off versus choosing that if it's not used during the course of the year, that it gets paid off at year end, or if it's allowed to be carried over and you can have an ongoing balance in there, whatever is earned at one rate doesn't get paid, or does get paid at a higher rate eventually unless the time off is taken. This city, for some reason, there were a number of balances that were allowed to accumulate citywide, and I wasn't here, so I'm, you know, I've gotten this report over the years second hand and third hand, but it's not too difficult to understand. It's that the balances had accrued to a point that people couldn't take the time off, and the amount that had to be paid out was rather large. And so because of all of that, the decision was made is we're not going to have to do that. And the issue of trying to provide time off is if people earn it, they get paid it, and we don't have that issue of trying to be able to schedule that, which is a challenge. You know, if you only have small numbers in a department and you've got certain obligations that have to be met, well, at the same time, you have people wanting time off for vacations or their comp time. So yes, we are, and it's abnormal when you look at that, that we don't have it, so that's the reason why. They went through it, they got rid of it, and to go back is something that could be done if the council formally wanted to do that. But the scheduling is such an issue that in our discussions, we aren't necessarily recommending that we go back to the comp time program.
No, and I'm fine with what you did here. I just wanted to make that point, that it seems like other similar sized cities, even smaller cities, were able to do comp time, all of them except us. And this whole thing, you know, it's been a lot of aggravation for you and a lot of work for you and a lot of, you know, aggravation and patience needing for me while you put this together. And really, it just goes back to that comp time issue. And it just seems like it could have been, you know, we're going on 18 months here with it, and alls I'm saying is that that was the one issue, that they didn't get to choose when the comp time was paid out. It was, it was...
No, no, it wasn't that the comp time was paid out, is that their work schedules got adjusted so they weren't eligible to earn overtime.
Eligible, yes, that's correct.
So it was a, it was a management decision to save that. And I believe, looking back in history, and I can't point to any specific time or whatnot, is that that was a philosophical organizational decision, I believe, that would have been made with some type of council input.
Sure.
An administrator decision for whatever reason, that that was the philosophy over a number of years, which has been continued. And so we can end that practice because we have the abilities under the law to either to schedule and to manage that, or we can choose not to do that. With your understanding and recognition that by not doing that, that will likely lead to overtime being earned in a number of areas instead of being managed to the point that the economics doesn't come into play. But I can't give you a recap that it amounts to X amount of dollars and say this is the savings or the fiscal impact, because in many cases with that going on, it doesn't show up that there was overtime, that they would have earned overtime for that week because the schedule was adjusted so that there were only 40 hours in that work week.
Well, I think they're going to be happy with this, with what you have, just for the simple fact that it matches up with the other neighboring cities for the most part.
And the piece when you say that, that's difficult to say, Sean, is that with what, Patty put this together in her summary of what's on this summary sheet, is that's developed looking at the non-union personnel policies for these neighbors.
Right.
If you look at eight out of the 10 that have public works union for their public works employees and buy that typically at streets or parks or wastewater or water, and even some of the electrical employees are in those type of unions, you will see some different standards and different policies that will look different than what's in the non-union policy. I had discussion with our city attorney's office and taken a look at that, and had a comment from Amy, and we talked about the practicality of trying to do something different for the public works employees within the non-union personnel policy that would be applicable to them. And I said, you can't, and he confirmed it. And the question is that can't do something for the non-union personnel differently for one department or a segment of the non-union personnel as I would do for anybody differently in that way? If there was, and there's not, that public works union or whatnot, you might see different language from some of those union contracts that would be different than what you're seeing here in our policy revisions, recognizing that everybody but the police department is considered non-union personnel.
Right.
So I just don't want you to walk away from this summary that we did, that you would see a different picture if we were sitting here comparing union contract language.
Right.
You're going to see some differences.
No, and I think this is, I think this is fair. They're, that's still their right. They want to go out and talk to the union and sign a union that they can negotiate their contract in similar fashion as these other ones do. I think this is, this is fair. It puts them right on the same track of the electric department and Bruce's guys. And I think that they'll be happy with it, and I'm certainly happy with the way that it turned out, so if it's fair.
Depending on whose point of view that's coming from, that there is a difference in what that word means, I've learned.
In what way? The electrical department's have to...
No, no, in the attempt to have something that is fair and equitable to all, that sometimes that wording means different things to different people in that same place.
Okay.
What might be fair and equitable to you may be different to somebody else in their interpretation, that if they did get quite what they wanted, even though it's a change to the benefit, and they were looking for more, it may not be fair and equitable.
Right, well, then they still have retained that choice to form their own union, but I just, you know, in the sense that it puts the two departments together, I think, is on similar playing fields. And even in administration with the people in the office.
Well, it...
And it matches up with the other surrounding communities pretty closely.
Any other comments?
In the beginning part of the policy, we don't, I know we don't have all day, but is it still stated that, I just want to make sure that it's still in there, that the employer still controls the hours worked?
Correct.
Okay.
The language that I had in my...
I just want to make sure that that didn't change because that's the whole basis of...
There are no other changes in the policies other than what you see in the red line copy.
Okay, so it does say the employer still controls the hours worked.
Employer sole authority.
Sole authority, okay.
Correct, and that language remained the same and is not proposed to change, which is correct. The city would be the sole authority in determining scheduling. And because of that authority, that's where we have the ability as the employer to adjust the work schedule within that particular work week.
I'm not denying that, Mike, I agree with it, yeah, I mean...
But that's why you're not seeing, even though we're proposing that change from a practice and an implementation standpoint, we don't have to change the personnel policy to do that, that, you know, that's a inherent managerial right that we as a city and an organization possess.
Absolutely.
And so simply, the same under the practice of Bruce, one way, one way, and a different way, they both align with federal law.
I didn't mean to imply that they didn't.
Okay?
That's one of the verifications I wanted.
Okay.
I don't know if any of them, after hearing this, that whether I got the summary quite right and the clarifications, I think you can see we went through a great deal of debate that they might tell you that if given the opportunity to include and account, you know, some vacation or sick leave as far as hours worked, if that change were to be made, that would provide a greater likelihood that the calculation of overtime would be different than what we're talking about, where it remains as we have recommended. There might be those that would desire that, but we're not recommending that at the present time.
But it was nice that you compared all the other cities because only Savage did that, right?
But in, but in this...
Yeah.
Remember the clarification that I tried to state earlier, is this is looking at the non-union personnel policies. If you went to look at, which I had started out in my endeavors in the booklet here, was taking a look at the union contracts and taking a look at what that language was, and you will see different overtime calculations in the union arena that will likely be different than what you're seeing in the non-union personnel policy language.
Right, well, that's, again, that's still their right if they want to pursue that through joining the union to do that.
So just to clarify too, we are adding a holiday if we approve this?
We have it in our recommendation, subject to your review and ultimate decision.
And that is, as they request, again, approved by their department head?
Yeah.
Yeah, a phone holiday, they could say, I'm going to take my phone holiday on Friday, and as long as...
As it's approved.
As long as you can handle your workload and no one else has it off, or you don't have everyone else, you can say yes.
That way, there doesn't take down a department, or we're not closed, and now you will provide public services by doing it that way.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the changes in our policy and also add the floating holiday. Second by Sean Ryan. Any other questions, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition?
Yes, no.
Okay.
And the reason I'm saying no is not because I don't like what the city did. I'm voting no on this because the process was not followed. This should never have come before the council, it should have gone to Mike, period.
I disagree.
Okay.
It's in the Home Rule charter.
I said it last time, but it's funny how, and as I explained to you, I wasn't trying to pull anything over, I was asking Mike to get information to bring to the council. But you made a comment at that time that you found it without board approval that I somehow usurped my authority as an elected official asking Mike to do this, which I did not. And I'm sure it wasn't explained well to Scott Riggs, because he probably would have been able to tell you that, or you could have just picked up the phone call, but instead, you called him without board approval that actually cost us money at $450 an hour. I don't know how much time that he used on your phone call, but it's funny that I needed approval, but yet you could call the attorney on your own and cost the city money.
That's the only time I've ever called the attorney on anything.
I know, but you could have picked up the phone and called me, and I could have explained it to you that I wasn't trying to...
Well, I should get your, you said that, no, I'm doing this because I treat all people that, it's not your words, I can't remember your exact words, but...
I ran on the fact that I would bring anybody that a citizen brought up to me, that I would try to find them an answer, and...
That's fine.
Several of those people that are employees...
That's fine.
Are city employees.
You treat them the way the Home Rules specified, and I don't know, it was that Scott called me back after he had gotten done with his regular work. I don't know if he charged anything or how much he charged. We were on the phone less than 10 minutes. Maybe Mike knows how he charged.
Well, maybe he didn't charge, that's true.
I believe he did, but it was not at $450.
Well, whatever the rate is that we approve.
$400?
No.
That rate is only $150.
$180 or $200.
Yeah, only $100.
Well, there are different levels, you know, if he's at court for us, it's different.
What date of these stuff is that that more of?
Okay, next, the consent agenda. Remember that we took the minutes out of there? Anyone have any questions? Any claims on the claims or... If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Maggie?
Yes, sir.
Second by Maggie Bass. Any other, if there's no other comments, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, we're to the fun part again. Miscellaneous, Patrick. It's been a long night, hasn't it?
Just that everybody have a safe and enjoyable Memorial Day weekend.
Well, thank you. You too. Mitch?
Good.
Good. Jim?
Just two items, we didn't get our parade permit for our Memorial Day parade, that came in today. And also, in our hiring process, we are looking at a second candidate, and I'll be working with Mike this week, probably making conditions... I'll be working with Mike this week to probably make a conditional offer to that person. So my plan would be at the next council meeting to present that new employee. That's all I have.
Bruce?
Just a quick update. After the service territory approvals were made by both boards about a week and a half ago, construction is in full swing. So it's, I think we've got in excess of fifty thousand feet of wire to get in the ground this summer to get the systems tied together. And then services for the new senior development and QuickTrip are already in. So it'll be a busy summer. Going good though.
When do you expect?
It is, tentatively, we hope to make the actual transfer that customers will receive electricity from New Prague Utilities will be in that October, November timeframe. So it kind of depends on construction and material availability, so.
Okay, good. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Glenn?
Baseball field's looking pretty good. They're playing ball out there. We're hearing that the field's playing good. So that's good to see. That swimming pool got fired up and then shut down because we, pipe broke underneath the deck, pretty close to the swimming pools or the diving boards, and we're trying to find it right now. Crack ceiling, getting ready for seal coating, and summer is in full swing. And we're really behind the eight ball, but.
Does that mean the pool will not be open for Memorial Weekend?
I, we're hopeful it will be.
Oh, okay.
But just not having a lot of luck finding it. So at this point, I don't want to say that because we could find it tomorrow and fix it and start pouring concrete and be done by Wednesday. Too early to tell.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Yeah, I think the baseball committee, Mike, you were at the meeting, I think they pretty pleased with the.
Yeah, the state baseball board was in on Saturday with the, they were holding their monthly meeting. They don't appear. They're also giving time to do an inspection of our facility. Being fairly impressed, but obviously some fine tuning with the height and the cover grass a little bit, and, you know, just some minor field influence for more part. And one of the board members thought, and they indicated it could be quite persnickety. And what's interesting is that I've had conversations with different people in our organization about using the word persnickety. And not everybody has, they'll look at it, I must be getting way over something because some of the younger generation, this board member happened to use it, so it stuck with me. But no, they were very pleased. The mayor gave a general welcome as he walked in off the golf course. And so they'll be back in July. I think they go to Shakopee next month, in June for the meeting. And I think they'll be back for their inspection in July, just ahead of the tournament. As you recall, we're going to be hosting twenty-nine games over three weekends. And so we're working quite closely with the baseball committee. And Glenn and I are trying to figure out how far we go with park personnel and what do we have available. The problem is, is mid-August, we lose most of our high school and college kids from hard-time summer employment right before we have to host those three weekends. So we don't have a lot of personnel, and so we're going to have to take a look at what we can do. Then we follow several weeks later with Dojinki for that weekend. So it takes manpower to cover those events. And so for this first baseball tournament, we want to make sure that we're prepared and have access to the right people to deal with emergency situations and things that likely will be encountered. We don't need to have egg on our face that in hosting this tournament that we haven't thought about this, that, or the other, or don't have Plan B and Plan C to address things. So as we work and talk, we're trying to go through, besides working with the baseball committee and what they've got lined up and the things that they're doing, we're trying to anticipate from a facilities and an operations standpoint, how do we cover these elements? And so we're trying to determine how far we can go, what do we need to have on call, what do we have doing what, and just where can we go relative to that time commitment? Because obviously you commence, what is it, three, six, nine, ten days of baseball with twenty-nine games. It'll put a, it'll put a demand on operations to make that work for those three weekends. But we're trying to approach this a little bit, that this is our first one. And so we want to be able to assess what kind of, what degree and what level of preparations do we have to have in place from such simple things as, you know, the lumber, the mower we're using, that that breaks down once the backup, the scoreboard, something doesn't work on the scoreboard from electronics, that, you know, things that you wouldn't customer think of is that I think we have to be able to go through with the baseball committee. And it puts a certain amount of onus on us as the host entity, as a community. We certainly don't want to fall flat and have egg on our face by not being prepared in all the respective areas. So we're trying to assess what level of commitment, what kind of staffing are we going to need to have on standby or capable to help, you know, if pressed or called into service to do things. So we're short from what we said right now, with three months away, June, July, August. Three months from, or under three months technically. But, you know, trying to get ready to do all that. Hopefully you've been by and taken a look at it, as Glenn said, that the contractor's finishing all the punch list items this week. Hopefully. Hopefully that we get that completed. And then it's working with the baseball committee and trying to find out, you know, what little improvements here, there are needed to make sure that it meets everybody's satisfaction level while still recognizing that this isn't professional baseball that's being played here. We still want to put our best foot forward, and that we don't have a full-time groundskeeper or ground staff to take care of it, that we've got park staff. But we also have how many parks and other public property to maintain and work with. And so that is a challenge, especially as we look at now just getting started and looking at the middle of August, we lose a fair amount of park staff. And we don't have that whole flotilla or contingency of all these part-timers that we're going to be able to pull into that like we might like to. And so that's probably our biggest challenge in trying to look in to make sure we are doing extremely well in all the areas.
Okay, anything else?
I don't have anything else, but you can see, we obviously working part on the Minda 2020 project as this comes forward from a public hearing standpoint and presentation to the public. You know, we've just gotten, this one got within the last month from Chris Porter. He went into the neighborhood, made the numbers. You know, we're trying to go through and look at this, and as you look at this, we're trying to forecast. He is at his numbers, looking ahead of this being 2020 instead of 2018 right now. But trying to make sure that his projections are adequate when we get to that time. Still a couple of years out from that end. And so it's been trying to look at that, and as we take a look at the assessments, the state aid, the overall debt service, you know, how does that ultimately play out as we go through and try to fine tune this? I think Glenn's biggest concern, and we don't have complete good answers, is trying to work with the various businesses. Although we've had the direct contact, we're going to have to have further direct contact of ensuring, the biggest challenge is of getting individual water lines and sewer service lines connected into the, what the basements or the lower level areas where they go into buildings, and in trying to work with property owners, because we really don't want to come away from this construction project where all of those service lines are not changed out and have been able to coordinate with some of the businesses. Because in some of their, inside their building, some of them have never seen their service lines because they're under concrete, or they haven't had to do anything with it. And so there's some challenges, and we're trying to figure out, what are our options? And how can we deal with that? Because if this road goes in in concrete as it is, and the sidewalks get put in, if a business owner chooses not to be thinking, and in some cases, some of the business owners may not be around when it comes time to having to do this. But let's use a six-inch water line, somebody wants to use the upstairs of their building. If we haven't sat down and had a discussion with them, that if we ultimately want to use that, and that invokes the need to require you to be able to sprinkle your building, if you don't put in that six-inch water service line now, for you to go back out there to try to dig up the street and then dig up the sidewalk, all in concrete, is the cost associated with doing that down the road will be much, much higher than it will be at the time we have everything opened up. And so Glenn and our staff, working with the engineering staff, will be making all of those individual building contacts. In some cases, some of the utilities that are in the building don't even come from an individual service line. They're connected to somebody else's. And so we're looking to try and get that straightened out because we get into building situations where you've got two or three owners on a service line and who's are using what part of that. And so we're trying to make sure that we get those segregated and separated to each and every building, and that the right owner and the right utilities are able to get connected that way. So there's a lot of work still left ahead of us in regards to that over the next year.
Okay, Barb?
Hello?
Sean?
I just have a quick thing. I read in the police report, Jim, that there was a predatory offender that was in, that was arrested in New Prague. Is that correct?
Yeah, on a warrant.
On a warrant?
Yeah.
Living within the ordinance area, or?
Uh, he's not a Level Three, so it doesn't affect him.
Okay, just, okay. I was just kind of curious about that. And then the other thing, Jim, was the, in the police, the year review that you gave two council meetings ago, I noticed there's one that there was a homicide? That was listed as a homicide? What was?
Yeah, it was an heroin overdose.
Oh, so then that.
And the county attorney, one of the, well, statute for homicide, one of the clauses is if you provide the drug. So they are looking to charge that out to the drug dealer that sold the drugs.
Oh, I see, okay. I was going to call that.
Okay, David?
Yeah, I gave Chuck sort of a proclamation, if you will. It was written by a friend of mine. But coming up sometime in September or October, I'm not sure when, the Legion is going to be doing some sort of a celebration. Because the Legion is named after a Charles Borak. A former classmate of mine was, had received the New Prague High School Distinguished Service Award recently, and his uncle, Charles Borak, died one hundred years ago this year. And it was him who is, the local Legion has been named after. So between Tom Borak and Paul Bush, they're planning some sort of a, an honorary memorial, something to do in September, October, I think, to honor Charles Borak and the local Legion. So that's what the proclamation is all about. And I don't have any details on it yet that's being worked out by other people. That's it.
So Barbie got some work coming up in the future.
All right.
Maggie?
No, nothing.
Amy? I don't have anything, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposition. Thank you, everyone.